Okay. Good evening. I'd like to call to order our regular meeting of October 26, 2012. Roll call, everyone present, Linda, except for Dr. Quick. We'd like to do a little thing in between the meeting and our opening. And so Superintendent Benton, I'll let you call with personnel.
We have been invited to choose the winner of the trip for the Strings Attached fundraiser. So if you'd like to come up to the microphone, just say who you are and a little bit about it. If you just sit down so you can be on TV and then we'll pull it.
Hi, I'm Robin Frost. I'm here to represent the Strings Attached Parents Support Group. And every year, the travel company that we use, ACIS, donates a trip for us so that the families can sell raffle tickets to help fund the travel accounts for the kids that are traveling either to Lake George in New York or to Europe. This year, we're going to Ireland. In April, I will be traveling with my son Jeremy, who is a sophomore this year.
I did not buy any tickets.
I will let you do the honors.
Robert, Robert.
Uh-oh.
And the winner is Nicholas Warham.
Oh, great. He's one of our students.
Oh, terrific.
Wow, that's fantastic.
Well, congratulations.
Oh, that's great. Thank you very much.
Wonderful.
Awesome. Congratulations.
Congratulations to Nicholas. I hope he's watching.
All right. Our next item would be approval of items by consensus. Superintendent Benton.
We have two approval of minutes of October 10th, regular session, and October 10th, executive session, not released. And then payroll warrant, food service two and food service three warrants, CB three and sped three warrant, and R 207. Take those separately.
Okay. All right. I entertain a motion for approval of the minutes of October 10th, regular and executive. Ms. Burns.
I make a motion for approval of minutes from October 10th, regular session, and October 10th, executive session.
And a second, Mrs. Barnes? Okay. All those in favor? Six and, no, five. Five in favor, Linda, and an abstention?
Yes.
One abstain. Mrs. Carroll was not present. Okay. I entertain a motion for the payroll warrant of 10:10:12. Mr. Hayes.
I'll make a motion that we approve the payroll warrant for 10:10:12.
Okay. And second, Mr. Mullis? All right. All those in favor? Five, no, that's not, one, two, three, four. Four in favor and two abstain. Mrs. Kane and Mrs. Carroll. All right. Warrant FS two, FS three, which is the food service warrants. Mr. Mullis.
Motion to approve warrants FS two and FS three.
Second, Mrs. Barnes? Okay. All those in favor? Five in favor, one abstain. Mrs. Carroll. Okay. Warrant CB three and sped three. Mr. Hayes.
I'll make a motion that we approve warrants CB three and sped three.
Okay. Oh, second, Mr. Mullis. All right. All those in favor? Two, three, four. Four in favor and two abstain?
Mm-hmm.
Two abstain. And warrant, last one.
You should get a prize.
Warrant R 207. Mrs. Barnes?
I make a motion to approve warrant R 207.
Second, Mrs. Burns. Okay. All those in favor? Unanimous. Finally. Thank you very much. All right. Our next item of business is a student representative report with Jessica Casperian.
For athletics, the girls and boys varsity soccer teams have made it to their championship for their league, and the tournaments will begin on November 1st. The girls cross-country is second in their division. The volleyball teams have had their dig pink game and raised $750 for cancer research. For clubs, Medical Careers Club, National Honor Society, and WHS Club ran a canned good fundraiser and raised enough fluid to fill a minivan. Student Council and National Honor Society are giving tours of the high school to eighth grade students tomorrow night, and Strings Attached is playing at the tour. One of the physical education teachers, Mrs. Nardo, has started a Zumba class for students after school. For music, Strings Attached has its annual Oktoberfest on Friday, October 27th, in which the seniors of the orchestra play for their parents and dinner is served. Strings also has other small groups playing at fundraisers such as Barnes &amp; Noble and school events. In other news, PSATs have been completed and took place last Saturday. The HULPS came into school to present Boys and Girls Leadership Conferences. The conference's objective is to make students feel more comfortable with themselves and understand different perspectives. Juniors and seniors attended Dear Lisa, a beautiful presentation given by Tom Santoro about relationship respect. Wilmington High is fifth place in the stock market game out of 100 places. And SAD Club, Students Against Destructive Decisions, is doing Red Ribbon Week to take a stand against drug abuse. Thank you.
Thank you, Jessica. Do we have any questions or comments?
I guess, Mrs. Burns. The Stark, I'm sorry, what was the stock market?
Yeah, the stock market game.
Can you explain what that is? I'm not familiar with it.
I'm actually not too familiar with it myself, but I can give you more information at a later date. But I think it's among like a lot of schools and we're fifth place, and Mr. Tracy can add to that.
You saw that he, that's good.
Business classes, managing money classes, get groups of students involved. We usually have anywhere from eight to 15 teams a year get involved in the tournament. It's a statewide tournament. It's run by the state to help students understand how the stock market works, how investing works. So they're actually investing in false portfolios against teams, 100 teams across Massachusetts. So right now, we're holding a fifth place.
That's wonderful.
It's great. Kids are doing a great job.
Thank you.
Can we take a look at those portfolios? I wonder if that would be insider trading or not.
Thank you. Wow, there's such a variety of activities at the high school. It's terrific. Thank you. Great report.
Thanks, Jessica.
Okay. Our next item of business is the superintendent's report.
There's three items under the superintendent's report. The first is the nurses' monthly activities report. This is a report that is required by the Ascension Skills Outbreak to be distributed to the school committee every month. In the month of September, there were 4,179 encounters, student encounters for nursing services. So we thank the nurses for their work. In the packet is the November 6th CIT Professional Development Day. We're excited to present the 21st Century Teacher Conference. Kudos to Assistant Superintendent Kate Burnham and Coach Mario Gravolisi and the Professional Development Committee. I think you will confer with me that there are quite a few choices, and it's going to be, should be a fabulous day. Reminder to all parents, there is no school on November 6th. That's full day professional development for staff.
Anyone have any comments or questions? I'd just like to say one thing. I don't know how you did it, but it says the committee was fortunate to have presenters donate their time and expertise. I think that is huge, considering the people that you have coming.
You're very lucky.
Really. Congratulations, however that was done. That's great. And if members of the school committee wanted to stop by, would that be okay?
We're all at the middle school that day.
Yes.
So if you see something that might be of importance, that's excellent.
Yeah, oh, voting to stop by the middle school.
That sounds great. That's terrific.
And lastly, is the report on the school improvement goals of 2011 to 2012 from each of the schools that Assistant Superintendent Burnham collected. If you recall, last year, there was a change in how school improvement plans had to be done. We had to include improvement goals for schools that did not make AYP. Now, this year, it's switched from AYP to levels, so we have not gotten the regs out on the new changes, but it was a mixed bag. Some of the schools made their goals, some came close, and some we still have work to do on.
Does anyone have any questions or comments on the summary report? I was thinking if we had questions or comments, we'd have the, poor principals have to come up, and then they'll come up later for the next year. But this is very, you know, very clearly stated for us, so thank you very much. All right, we'll move them right along. Old business, we have no old business. New business.
I'm happy to present to you this evening a draft of the new kindergarten report card. The head teachers, Jen Mahan and Erin Burke, chaired a committee of kindergarten teachers that included Mary Ann Keefe, Christine Hollerin, Dolly Harrison, Lisa Murphy, who's here this evening. Thank you, Lisa. Abigail, Karen Burtt, Cocken Burtt, I always said wrong. Cacambres. Megan Riley and Kelly Torby worked on the report card. You will notice that this reporting system is different than you've seen before. The skills and concepts included in this report card are aligned to the National Common Core standards that the state of Massachusetts adopted last year. These standards identify what Massachusetts public schools kindergarten students should know and be able to do. The purpose of report cards for me at that kindergarten level is really to have an ongoing conversation with, between teachers and parents on what the students are expected to know and how successful they are in each of the areas. This is the first of many report cards that we will be revising based on the Common Core. And it can seem a little overwhelming, but the state is now asking that we report on, under language arts, kindergarten foundation skills, which include preconcepts, phonemic awareness, word recognition, fluency, reading and literature, key ideas and details. This could all apply to seniors in high school, as it does to kindergarteners, reading informational texts in which students start to integrate knowledge and ideas, language vocabulary acquisition, conventional English use, and last but not least, writing, research to build and present knowledge. Kindergarteners are expected, teachers are expected to include those skills in their day-to-day teaching. With regards to math, the Common Core standards are broken up into five areas, operations in algebraic thinking, numbers in operation in basic ten, numbers in operation in fractions, measurement and data, and last, geometry. I commend the committee for their hard work, and actually, it's going to be a model for the upper grades. And we do have Jen Mahan and Erin Burke in the audience if anybody has any questions. And again, thank you to the kindergarten teachers. Elementary curriculum cabinet has also approved of this draft. And lastly, one more thing. I do want to point out that we have not excluded the arts, and if you notice, one other area, and that's technology, which is now something that we are grading all students on. So I think that gives you a little cross of the heads of view of the new report card.
Okay. Does anyone have any questions? Mr. Hayes?
Just a couple, a question and a comment. So my comment is, I went to our policy manual and I found the policy that deals with report cards, IKAB, Student Progress Reports to Parents and Guardians. And I'm glad to say that everything was followed to the letter, letter of the law there, so that was good. And my question is, and you addressed this actually in goal one of your improvement plan, but how are parents going to be brought up to date, educated on the new report card?
Why don't you come up?
Why don't you come up to the?
That would be great.
Since you, Paul got dressed up and came up with you on camera.
Fifteen minutes of fame here.
So in answer to your, I'm Jennifer Mahan, head teacher at the Batwell. So in answer to your question about how will we reach out to parents to let them know, our plan is to host a parent event for both schools at one school in the evening to introduce the report card to the parents, explain it to them, and then also give them some tips on how to get the most out of their parent-teacher conferences using the new report card.
Thank you.
Anyone else have any questions? No? Mrs. Carroll?
I think it's great, speaking and listening. I mean, that's kindergarten, you know, after having kids of my own. Fine motor skills, all those, great. Love it. You know, that's what parents want to see. How is my child doing with the crayon pencil? What do you think? So I love it. I like the report card. Very nice.
Thank you.
Okay. I had a couple of questions. Just as, I always react this way when the state puts, imposes these things on us, and I'm horrified. And I was horrified at first when I read through some of these items, and knowing that they come from the state, but for instance, writing, being a former teacher of English, use a combination of drawing, dictating, and writing to compose opinion pieces, single-event narratives, using appropriate sequence.
I'm not sure I can do that.
And so I have to give you such credit if you're going to be able to accomplish this task. And originally, when I saw this, I didn't understand myself, the gray squares, and I really was not going to vote for it. But the gray squares is a great idea, because what it means is they're not going to be tested on that, or they're not going to be accountable for that. For instance, if there's a gray square in number one, the first report card, they don't have to achieve that. So that not only have you looked at what you have to put in here, but you've really found a way to accommodate it so that it fits in for kindergarteners. Because, boy, get a look at those kindergarteners, and God bless you, I think they, I truly feel that the kindergarten teachers are the support of the rest of the educational system. They never get selected to be the teacher of the year at the high school. It's always someone in the high school. And yet, if you didn't have them, I don't know what we would do in our school system. And the other part about the kindergarten teachers, I had so many friends who were kindergarten teachers my last few years of teaching, that I would be at the functions and they'd be talking about, talk, talk, talk about what they would do. And then I learned to borrow their methods. And their methods can work with, so I can see how this can be the beginning of our report card, even the basis. And really, they should be given more legitimacy, I feel, than we do sometimes in the system. We forget that without this strong foundation, where would we be in the upper grades? And I really congratulate you for that. My one thing that I think is, for me, I know we're glad that we have technology in here, but they don't have, if we're looking at technology as a tool, they don't have control over technology. So I guess I think the wording may be, I think what you're talking about is if they have, like, the software, the software, and they can master the software, as opposed to saying uses technology throughout the curriculum when appropriate. They don't, they can't, do you know what I'm saying? I'm reading this wrong, or?
Well, the way this is written, correct me if I'm wrong, is, for example, if they are in the computer lab and using a math software program and are able to complete that, or aim to do an assessment, that's how they'll be graded. There are different standards, even for kindergarten. They need to know how to turn on a computer, what the keyboard is, identify what a mouse is. Those are the skills, state standards, that kindergarteners need to do. So that's under that, comes under that.
But I think I would rather have that listed than...
So as being vague?
As the...
As you're referring to, it's a little too vague? It doesn't concentrate as to what they're expected to know?
Yes, I think if I were a parent, right.
The use of technology maybe?
Do you know what I mean? I don't, they need to bring, and we don't...
No, and I think it's definitely a good point. I think for us, with the committee, we kind of wanted it vague because we weren't sure we were ready for kindergarteners to necessarily be able to master all those skills, when right now, they're really only going to the computer lab once a week with their classroom teacher for a half hour.
Exactly.
So we wanted it to be more of an exposure element, which is one of the reasons it's graded out for the first term. We're exposing them between now and November. And then, once we come to the second marking term, we would expect that they'd be able to manipulate the mouse, access the reading eggs program that they're using for literacy. So it's, I think we were looking at it more as just kind of being general on purpose, just because we don't have, I don't think, we don't have curriculum in place necessarily for, to be able to address that right this second.
Exactly. We could tweak the words, demonstrates an initial, you know, introductory ability, you know, with tech. We could, we could...
We can definitely tweak the language.
Would that cause you a problem?
Not at all.
Okay. Because that's the only one, then I think you'd be, it's really a terrific report card.
Thank you.
Yeah. Really appreciate how much you've done.
Quick question. Following up on what you had said. So the gray boxes means they're not being graded in that particular term. So I guess my question is, how does a parent know if their child is falling behind or keeping up with that particular subject that's not being graded in that term?
I think that, again, kind of speaks to what Superintendent Benton had said earlier, which is just the general conversation that classroom teachers are having with parents, both at conferences, as well as their ongoing dialogue throughout the year, to inform parents, you know, listen, that these are the standards that we're working towards. At this point, your child is here. During the conferences, they'll be sharing with them assessments that have happened throughout the year, even though we're not actually marking it on a report card that's going home. Parents are still going to be given that information during conference time. So it just won't be documented per se until we would expect that developmentally, a kindergartner would be able to master that. Does that make sense?
It does. Thanks.
Any other questions? Well, thank you so much. That was great. Thank you.
Thank you. Excuse me. Yes, it's Lawrence. I did have a question with regards to the summary from the superintendent's report. I didn't know if I could get it, have it addressed.
I didn't...
I did have a question with regards to the summary.
Oh, the summary.
And I apologize. I had a question regarding the goals, the report, the progress summary.
Oh.
And I apologize for, I don't want to backtrack on old business. It pertained to the, I needed clarification on a paragraph because I wasn't quite sure how to interpret it. Under the West Intermediate School.
Mr. Shaw, you come up?
Hi, thank you very much.
Sure, sure.
Under the summary, in the last paragraph, the third paragraph?
Yeah.
Let me know when you're ready. Caught you off-guard, I'm sorry.
That's okay.
It's under goal one.
Okay, go ahead. Under goal one.
Third paragraph, under summary?
Yep.
I'm not sure how to interpret the sentence, "High needs student growth improved but was below the 2012 target," which I get, "and their performance actually declined." I kind of, I understand that it improved, yet it wasn't where we wanted to see it, but that it declined a little.
It's a great question, because there's actually two measures. The growth is one thing, and performance is something else. It's two different things.
Okay.
Growth is more, is the student growth is one measure, that performance is the academic measure of the scores.
Okay, because they can be used, and I thought, okay, that's, I couldn't figure it out.
Does that make sense?
Now it makes sense.
So they can demonstrate growth, they can gain in growth, but their scores still don't always show exactly how much they grow.
Perfect.
Does that...
That makes a lot of sense, because I was using it as an interchange for the saying, okay, that makes a lot more sense.
Excellent.
Thank you so much. Appreciate it.
You're welcome.
Thank you.
All right. Thank you.
I'll be back.
Okay. All right. And new business number two is the school improvement plans.
And I think Assistant Superintendent has a bar point.
I do. Okay. So we need to move.
So all of the school improvement plans are tied to the district goals, which are outlined here. They're consistent with the goals that we had in place last year as well. Student learning, adult learning, finance and budget, facilities and space utilization, climate and culture and technology. And all of the principals receive the charge from the superintendent that the school improvement plans would align with the district plan for student achievement, that the plans should be data-driven and measurable in terms of progress on those goals. And progress on each item during the current year needs to be documented in a way that there are measurable goals, and now the measurable goals need to be tied to those gap-having targets that we talked about several weeks back when we talked about the PPI. So the goal now is by 2017 to cut the achievement gap in half, and incrementally each year to reach that goal by 2017. So the first plan in the document that you have is the high school, school improvement plan. So I'd invite Mr. Tracy, Principal Tracy, to the table.
I'd like to thank the members of the Wilmington High School School Advisory Council, teacher Brenda Marku, parent Diane Doyle, parent Kathleen Reynolds Black, teacher Linda Peters, student Liz Harvey, parent Midora Miller, student Chris Romano, student Stephen Valenti, parent Julie Olson, student Rachel Zeppe, and parent Kristi Oreo, all at a hand in developing goals. As we started last, actually, April, developing some of these goals, we knew that were connected to previous goals and that will continue to be connected, and then some of the newer ones, as we received the information related to MCAS. The goal, first goal, reaches all the way back to 2010 and even earlier than that, to continue to address the recommendations of the accreditation visiting team report. There were 43 recommendations that were made currently. I just submitted the report for October, the two-year report. We have completed 18 of those. We have 17 still in progress, and six that we reserved for future, who will probably end up linking to work that will be done for the new high school. So we're making very good progress there, and we'll continue to work on that. The next report that's due in succession is the five-year report, but the accreditation committee that reviews our October 1 report that was just submitted could send a request for a special report. I would anticipate something related to the building based on the appeal, because we had to submit a special report last January related to the building and the progress. So they really want to be kept in the loop on that. So we'll probably have another special report due at some point, either in the late spring or early summer, to address that issue. Nothing substantial, but they usually ask for information related to the minutes of the meetings and the progress of the high school building committee and things like that. So we anticipate that one. Others, we will, we just, we wait and see what we get back in the letter and take the direction from that. The second one is to reduce the number of students in the fail category in the MCAS introductory physics assessment by one-third. If you look at the previous year, we'll back up a little bit. Our ninth-grade students take the introductory physics assessment because our physical science, we spent several years working the physical science, aligning the physical science courses that are taken in ninth grade to the introductory physics assessment. So ninth grade, we felt confident that ninth-grade students could do it. The first year, we plunged all of our ninth-grade areas into it. 96% met the threshold. This past year, it dropped down to 91%. In pretty specific, specifically identified areas, we have one area of waves that we, as we examined the data, we noticed that was the big area that we had some difficulty with. And when we talked to the two teachers, we realized that one did it at one point of the year, and one did it at a different point of the year, approximately five months apart. So therefore, we show those differences in some of the results. So we're confident in being able to reduce the number of kids who didn't make it through by making the adjustment in the curriculum and reducing that for the next time around. Third goal... Third goal, to continue to work with the 21st Century Committees, the Schedule Committee, the Curriculum Committee, Technology Committee, and others as they begin to prepare for the transition to the new building. Those committees have not jumped in yet this year. They did meet many times last year. We are basically in kind of a holding pattern, waiting to see what goes on with the appeal and then push forward with at least the Schedule, Curriculum, and Technology Committees because they were underway last school year. Those will be the priorities to be able to develop some schedule that will meet the needs of the new building. As you look at the new building, the new building is definitely designed to be utilized differently. The approach to teaching, the project-based models, the possibility of pods of students, and we have to look at all of those 21st-century requirements, if you will, and build a schedule that meets the need and also make the curriculum adjustments at the same time. So those two committees will run in tandem. And then the Technology Committee, they can make a decision today and it'll be no good in six months. You look at the way technology is changing, Apple has come out with three products every six months, which is very difficult for schools to keep up with. We also have to look at other avenues of, you know, the BYOT plan and where, as you know, we have wireless being installed in the swing in the high school, hopefully in December, so we can start to utilize that for the second semester here, and begin to kind of hone what makes sense and what works and what are the difficulties and work all those kinks out. So the Technology Committee will be continuing that work along the way and examining that and working with teachers and students and trying to get some answers. We've ordered a couple of different devices already to just trial them, and we'll continue to do that along the way so that we can figure out what works best in school situations. And then continue to explore common planning time opportunities for our staff while assessing the changes that were made in the 2012-13 schedule. The plan that I submitted that I believe you have in your package outlines a number of connections and correlations that we made in the master schedule over, across departments. History and English, for instance, grade-level connections. And our next step is to be able to connect teachers in ways that they can take all of the work we did in CIT last year, the project-based learning, opportunities that were developed through the CIT time, and begin to discuss ways to work together in conjunction with two or three or four departments in developing a long-term project. We really have to do this in multiple steps because of master schedule tweaks that go along the way. But also, you know, we have to negotiate some items. We also have to look at how teaching and learning will change. That 21st-century teaching is dramatically different than what we do now. It is dramatically different, and we have to work with our teachers at this kind of introductory level and help them to not only understand those core concepts of 21st-century education, but also how to develop these long-term projects. You can't just pull them out of your hat. You can, you know, dig out sources and work with sources, but then you need to have that ability to stand back and let your kids take over, and that's tough. That is very difficult to do, and those are some of the things that will occur along the way. And opening up these opportunities will help teachers kind of step into this as we move into the new high school.
Do we have any questions or comments?
Two questions. My first question on Goal One. Would it be possible for the school committee to receive a copy of the two-year report that you provided earlier this month? Because, you know, I don't know which of the 18 have met, which of the 17 haven't yet, and which of the six we're pushing off for later. So that would be great. And then my second question, this came up at the last meeting, and Mrs. Bonish asked this question, and then I kind of asked this question, and I thought I understood it, but then I thought more about it, and I don't think I do. Regarding the 10th-grade science, MCAS. So if a lot of the students are taking the physics exam in 10th grade, but they're not taught physics at the high school level until 11th grade, does that, does that make sense? Where am I, I don't understand. How does that work?
When you look at the physical science course that ninth graders take, it's introductory physics.
Is it real, okay, so things have changed?
Yes.
Okay, because I took biology my freshman year, but that was 10 years ago.
Some of our kids do take biology. Some of our kids come in from the middle school into honors biology. They would take the biology test.
I see.
The state allows them to take the test that correlates with the course they're currently enrolled. A majority of our kids take the physical science class, and that physical science class, if you lay it out in front of you, magnetism, waves, all different theories, gas theories, those are all physics principles. And they're basic physics principles, just don't tell them. I mean, really, when you look at it, nobody's coming out saying we're teaching an introductory physics course. But the advanced physics down the road is designed to meet the needs of kids that may want to get into engineering. That's high-end. Some of it's calculus-based. It's not something that we would drop freshmen into.
Gotcha. Okay, thank you for that clarification. And then my only other comment, rather than make it eight times or five times, I'll just say that, you know, if there's ever anything the school committee can do in terms of, you know, budget, policy, you know, some necessary vote for a curriculum change or something, if there's anything we can do that we're not already doing to help you meet your goals, I mean, please let us know.
Appreciate that. And the answer to your first question is, the report will be posted online and I will send the hard copies to Superintendent Benton.
Thank you for that. And also, just another comment to all the speakers is it would be great if we could post these improvement plans on each school webpage. I know some of them are already up and others aren't, so that would be great. Thanks.
I would just like to ask you, you had, can't find which paper it's on. Put community people together with common planning time. So is that actually happening this year that they do have their common planning time?
Common planning time is built into the schedule right now. So I'll give you an example. Third period, teachers in algebra and teachers in physical science have the same period off in the schedule.
So have you, it just sounds to me like, when I did this, we just plopped into it. We spent some time doing it in the summer, and then we started it in September, and we had to use that planning time because that was the deal. You got to have common planning time with your fellow who you knew you could work with in another department, but you had to come up with a program. And fortunately, I got to do the facing history program. But it looks to me like, are we taking another year for them to develop something more? Or are they going to start it this year and do some preliminary work on it and then work it out so it gets better and better?
Some people are starting this year. I don't currently have any particular directive that came out and said, "You have to do this at this time," because I don't believe I can. I believe that might be a negotiated item. So I'd have to look at that from that perspective with Superintendent Benton. But the plan is to ultimately give them the opportunity and the time to develop those without impinging on the current prep time they have. That's the long-term plan.
So how many preps do they get a week?
Seven. Over a seven-day cycle. We work on a seven-day cycle.
Okay, you just confused me with what you said, though. If they're seven days, not all of those are the common planning time? Or you managed to get all of them common planning time, all seven days?
Yes, ma'am.
Wow, that's impressive. But you haven't told them, did they choose to have planning time with somebody else? Like, if I was given the common planning time with a science teacher, then I'd be hard-put to find a project that we could do. Would they?
There wasn't individual choice. It was based on what they were teaching. So if you're teaching, use English, English 9, the history 9, the US 9 teachers have the same exact period off. So there's opportunity for integration there within the curriculum and also with just individual teachers that may want to do a long-term project. They may want to take two classes down and do a big project with them, say, in the auditorium. We have that ability to do that because they have that common time to sit together and go through it.
Exactly. So what I'm saying, I guess, is I'd hate to let this drag out for a whole other year. We have the time. They've been given a gift, really. And hopefully, that some of them, how are we going to get them enthused to do this? Are we going to come up with some programs that these might be ones that you'd consider? Do we do this through professional development? It just seems like there's so many possibilities out there. And we've been talking about this for a couple of years. I would like to see them get started. So I'm hoping that we can encourage them to start, at least try, get one project done before the end of the year. Work together on a project. And Mrs. Benton?
We do have some teachers that have already stepped forward, math and, I mean, English and social studies in some of the different departments. It only works if it comes from the teachers.
Exactly.
We can't, I'm not a believer in dictating to all of them that they have to do this. They certainly have heard the message loudly and clearly about what the new high school is going to look like and what the 21st-century skills they have to teach are going to include. Some of them need a little bit more professional development to get to that step than others. So, I mean, I think, you know, just the whole second semester with piloting of a bring-your-own-device-to-school and integration with technology, that's one big chunk that we're pushing. We have an extra netbook cart we ordered for the kids who don't have technology that they can, you know, bring from home. That's one piece. We've got teachers that have applied for professional development points for doing integrated units. So I think we're in a good place, but we certainly are not going to force it this year. We will have summer workshops next summer that they can do curriculum work with the hope that the goal is by the time the high school opens, new high school opens, we'll be ready to go in all areas.
And I totally agree with you. I think it might not have come out right, but that's why I was asking about the times. Did they choose them? Because it has to come from the teachers. It definitely does. But I think they can, teachers can get excited about things, too, and it just takes like that one workshop or that one idea to get them excited about it. So I just hope that we move on with those things and don't wait too long. Because I'm afraid if you drag it out for too long, then it doesn't look appealing to them, so.
It's also, it's just a balancing act also. We're looking at, you know, we're looking at teachers that are developing new AP courses. We're looking at teachers that are developing long-term projects and project-based learning, building a new schedule, changing the curriculum to align it with the common core. We're jamming a lot of things kind of down the pipe, and I think our teachers are handling it very well. And I think they're doing, the people that are involved are going to be the people that will lead the way. And they're certainly leading the way.
That's great. Yep. Okay, do we have any other comments? All right, thank you very much.
Middle school. Christine.
Lady Mary Wilson.
Thank you. I would like to take a moment to recognize the members of the school council who helped solidify the goals for this school year. Hope Keenum Doran, our assistant principal, but I would actually might like to acknowledge Mara Kilbride, who stepped in for her during her maternity leave. She had a lot of great input on our objectives and our goals. Terri Sheehan, assistant principal, Rick Kane, Donna Dubay, and Chris Frye, who are our teacher representatives, and Chris LeBlanc and Lori Ryan, who are our parent representatives. So we focused very similarly on our goals on student learning and student achievement and technology. So you'll hear the very similar themes throughout the evening on these goals. Specifically on Goal One, to strengthen written language skills for all students with a high focus on, a special focus on the high-need students. We continue to see that our writing scores and our ELA scores are not going in the trajectory that we want. And so as maybe you saw in the progress report from last year, we really hit a home run with math. We put a lot of our efforts, and the teachers really came together. Support from Central Office, Mrs. Burnham, Mrs. Benton, Linda Peters, the CTL, and the teachers really pulled together, and you could see that cohesive movement. And so, you know, now it's time to work on the ELA and the science, technology, and engineering. So we're really going to follow suit and do some of that copycat work in those other departments, specifically in the writing. And we definitely have to make sure that we are aligned with the common core. We are really going to focus on our after-school program this year, incorporating English Language Arts. It has solely been math in the past, and now we have to remember the writing in the English Language Arts and the reading comprehension as well. And one of the other pieces is the training coming on. We hope to use one of the upcoming CIT days for a training on the six traits plus one, not just for ELA teachers. We've trained our ELA teachers. We've even had some special education teachers who are in the inclusion setting go in and support that. Now, we want to do school-wide so that when social studies teachers are giving an open-response question, they're using the same jargon as their English teacher, and they're using the same vocabulary to focus on certain traits in their writing and to strengthen their writing. So that's our hope this year. Goal Two, to strengthen our student achievement and our student engagement, which comes to be a focus in the middle school ages, in those age ranges of six through eight, in those adolescent years, and letting kids know that it is important that you work hard and you give your best effort on MCAS and that you show what you know. And we're battling a little bit here and there about how it doesn't count until the 10th grade, but we try to refocus the students and let them know that this is the best gauge for their baseline in the middle school years. So as I mentioned, we came a long way with the mathematics, and we are trying to halve our gaps, and we are working toward becoming a Level One school. And then finally, the technology piece, as Mr. Tracy mentioned. We are actually currently having a wireless network at the middle school, and that is actually up and running. And we are going to use that as a tool, and again, putting technology in students' hands and teachers' hands and continue to grow that. We had a discussion at the math department meeting just yesterday with regard to smart boards. And some would say, "Oh, you're a great new school, 2012." We have two smart boards in our building, in our building. And for 892 students, that seems a little off. But we also have a great piece in the English Language Arts classrooms where we have Elmos, not Elmos, Mimos that are interactive and make that whiteboard interactive so that 21st-century learning can take place. So we have to continue to build so that the kids are using technology as part of their learning each and every day.
Can I just ask you on that?
Absolutely.
I couldn't figure out what the Mimos are, and when you just described it, I can't figure it out.
There's a bar on the whiteboard that's secured, and it creates the screen so that when you touch things or you write, it almost becomes like a smart board, where it becomes interactive. And you can show and demonstrate things that you could not do just with having a whiteboard and a projector.
And do most of the teachers in the middle school have that?
No, the English Language Arts all. So we have nine. We have nine in the English Language Arts Department. We have the two smart boards in additional classrooms, in our lab and in the science classroom. And we actually have all six grade teachers in mathematics this year have Elmos, or some people call them Elmos, the document cameras, which allow them to demonstrate up to the whole class something on a page, some sort of a manipulative, and everybody gets to see it at once instead of crowding around a desk, let's say. So we're building, year by year, to get more technology into the classrooms. And as Mr. Tracy said, it's forever-changing and evolving. So, you know, people want the next best thing, and they see something at a workshop or a conference, and they want to be able to bring it back to their classroom.
Thank you. Oh, were you, had you finished?
I could.
Ah, yeah.
Does anyone have any questions? I'm going to go through these days.
So I have two questions. My first question is, for Goal One, you mentioned, "Follow the recommendation of the middle school think tank with regard to creating additional instructional minutes for ELA." And then in Goal Two, "Follow recommendations of middle school think tank with regard to creating additional instructional minutes in mathematics." So, you know, how would the math, how does the math work on that? How is there enough time in the day to increase, you know, writing time, increase math time, and not sacrifice too much of everything else?
Our task at hand, we have a group of teachers and staff members meeting since August through September as well, and we are going to be doing some research and coming back together in November to examine other schedules from other schools and middle schools in the area, which we've been doing throughout, and trying to take a look at our staff and our offerings and how we throughout, and trying to take a look at our staff and our offerings and how we can fine-tune them and use our staff optimally to create a schedule that works, that increases those minutes. And so that might mean using the technology classes in a different way, having math and English integrated into those. It may mean a schedule, instead of a six-day cycle, which we currently have, a five-day schedule, kind of like the normal world, Monday through Friday, and having P E two times out of five days instead of every other day on the six-day cycle. So we're looking at all of those pieces, and as Mrs. Benton mentioned earlier and Mrs. Kane, it has to come from the teachers. We're trying to pull everybody together and build trust in our group and work as a team to create the optimal schedule for middle school kids in grades six, seven, and eight.
Right.
Mrs. Benton?
This is something that I had asked Principal McQuinamann and our team to work on, because I think that our middle school students are at a disadvantage in the schedule they have right now, in that they don't have 50 to 55 minutes a day of math, 50 to 55 minutes a day of writing in English Language Arts, and they really need it. So they're starting with the handicap. So when they get to the MCAS, they haven't gotten to the place where other kids have in the curriculum because of the time.
Sure.
So they have an optimal situation right now, if they can all see it that way, and Christine has done a great job of leading everybody along, and that is, I'm not interested in reducing staff from the school, but what I'd love for them to do is rethink the schedule so that our students can, we can maximize the time on curriculum with our students and use the staff to support it that way.
Sure.
So that perhaps, although this might sound controversial to some, instead of computer classes, the technology is integrated into the content area so that we can have more time on those areas. And I believe your MCAS scores will go up.
Sure, sure. No, that makes sense to me. So best of luck with that, with that think tank scheduling issue there. And my second question is regarding to, you used the phrase six traits, and I just wasn't familiar with that. I hadn't heard that before, I don't think, so could you just briefly describe what that is?
Sure. The six traits plus one writing program is something that we've worked on, actually six through 12, I would say over the past three years, really trying to adopt as a systematic or an analytical approach to the writing process. There are many other writing programs out there that other schools may have used and have found success with. This is something that our teachers feel invested in, and they feel that it makes a difference when they're explaining the writing process to the students. So it can be anything from the trait of voice, who are you writing this piece for? Who is your audience, which is something that we all know about, to the presentation, to the sentence fluency, which is really more about your syntax and your grammar. And so as we go through moving it school-wide, we're hoping that health teachers, art teachers, when students are reflecting on a piece of art that they either made themselves or that they have looked at, that they can be instructed to write using a particular trait, and that way they'll understand that everything is connected and that the teachers are all on the same page with their writing. So it's just a very formal, systematic approach to teaching the writing process of where you begin, what traits you want to use to strengthen your writing, and then they give the feedback to those particular traits.
And then the only, the comment I would make is, you know, as I told Principal Tracy, if there's anything we can do, i.e. technology budget, you know, please let us know. I think we'd be more than, more than, you know, willing to help.
I'll say.
Wait till I say. I could probably give the kids a little bit of a heart attack in the fact that, you know, we need more time. It's like, you know, more hours in the day to do all that's asked of us, more minutes in the day, and that's a tricky thing. You know, we have the kids for just over six hours a day, and there's a lot to put in that day, and then everybody has to eat lunch, and we do like to have our homeroom. It's a nice morning activity where the kids come together, they have the same group, and they hear their morning announcements, and it's a way that we communicate at the middle school. So all of those minutes add up, and we need to make sure that the instruction is the primary piece.
Well, I'll make a deal. Once you find enough minutes in the day, we'll find enough dollars in the budget to fund your technology.
Thank you, Mr. Reggio. I appreciate that.
Thanks.
Thank you.
Yes.
A quick question. What was the thought behind doing a six-day or even seven-day schedule? That's, I'm just, bizarre to me. I just don't understand it if you're, don't have the, you would think on a seven-day cycle you'd have more time to address certain curriculum and content, but it just, I don't know. I mean, granted, I know a lot of things have changed in the 30 years since I've been out of high school.
Well, a lot has changed, actually, in the six years that I've been here, and it's interesting that you asked that question. It's a very good question. Originally, four and a half years ago, we changed the middle school schedule, and that was to have some uniformity and some consistency in the instructional minutes. The previous schedule was a five-day schedule with an activity block for students who might participate in some of the musical performance programs. However, it was an issue with time on learning, that every student is engaged, as the state would ask us to, for over 900 minutes throughout the course of the school year, and the minutes were a little bit disjointed. On certain days, the class was 42 minutes. On another day, it was 46 minutes. So we tried to go all the way to 50 minutes, and we achieved that, but we had to take a few minutes back for homeroom. So we've been working on this and trying to get it close to 60, but that was with a six-day cycle. The six-day cycle is what some would call an A-B schedule. You know, you have your major subjects, but you have certain specials on the A day and certain specials or unified arts classes on the B day, and that was to sort of rotate them throughout the school year. So there were a lot, there are a lot of pluses to our schedule. Some parents enjoy and teach, students enjoy the fact that physical education is offered every other day throughout the school year that had previously not been in place. It was there, but it just was in a different format, that they get exposure to all of these unified arts and all of the other things that kids, when you're talking about the whole child, you want to develop, an art class, a music class, where they learn to either compose or to play the guitar or to play the keyboard. Those are all reaching different intelligences that kids have, but then we have our mandates. So it's balancing it all, juggling, actually.
It is, well, you, and you have to be, I would think, fairly well-organized to know what day you're walking in on and...
Well, yeah, the kids get it right away. It takes them maybe a week, and they get it probably more than the teachers. Sometimes you do say, you know, which class is coming in to me today, but it does, it does work, and the kids all follow it, and the parents have been wonderful. When we post the calendar on the website, they know what day they have physical education. They know what day that strings is coming, and they need to remember their instrument. So all of those things are important communication-wise.
Thank you, I appreciate that.
You're welcome.
Mrs. Cal?
Bring your own device. We're going to let the parents know in, while advanced.
That, yeah, that would be something.
We're going to have a meeting or something to tell them what technology we want.
Sure, that is really going to come, I think, from the district, Mrs. Benton, from the group here, from Neil Ellis, who's the director of technology, and it really is going to be a sort of a team effort to roll that out in the right way. Whether it starts with a pilot, very small, with perhaps just the eighth graders who might be responsible, and then more communication in little by little.
Great.
So.
Let the parents know. I can't go on.
I have a question, sorry. Just to follow up. So are we possibly, just reading your goals here, so are you possibly thinking about initiating a eighth-grade pilot program for next fall, BYOT?
No. We're hoping to do it sooner.
Sooner.
We've got the, we've got, we have three...
Are the laptop carts though going to be like traditional, is that BYOT, though?
No, that would be more teacher-directed.
Yes, but in addition to that, you're planning on starting this even sooner?
I would say a small pilot before the end of the school year.
At the high school, we're planning to do it this year.
Right, right.
At the middle school, we have the devices for the kids.
Yeah.
The class, the teacher, the class that, couple of classes that choose to do it. We have not decided whether they're going to go home or not.
Right.
That's at the middle school level.
And there is a committee that's been established to work on all of those protocols, the language that would be in the handbook, who, you know, all the policies that go along with that, because it's a lot of work.
Sure.
To do it right.
What devices are we thinking of using with them?
Netbooks.
All right, are they just, they're not the same as the laptop cups we gave them? There's three laptop carts?
Those are netbooks.
Oh, those are the netbooks.
No, they're not full-size laptops. They're like mini netbooks.
Okay, so I saw, I saw that there's a committee for use of those. Is that the same thing?
Yes.
Okay. So we have them available, they're already there, and then we're going to have a committee to see how to use them. So they're not going to the entire school, they're going to the eighth grade, you're thinking?
That's up to the committee to decide. And we're going to work on it together.
Oh.
That's going to be decided as the group looks at the whole big picture.
Okay. I had a couple of questions here. One of the things was, it says to plan a sixth-grade practice MCAS long. Is that in the sixth-grade testing?
It is not in the sixth-grade testing, but we did have a lot of success last year with the seventh grade, where it is an official, formal MCAS test in March, and in the elementary schools, they do do a writing prompt every year, and it gets scored, and so we thought it would be important to stay consistent, not skip the sixth grade, and it's another opportunity for feedback for students and for parents to see where their writing is at.
I saw, because I saw it, and I couldn't see it in yours, so it must be in someone else's, they were talking about the students having problems with open-ended questions. And so I was wondering why we wouldn't focus on open-ended questions, but it can't be your school, then. It must be another school.
No, I think, well, that's definitely a need, I think, at our level as well, and I know that the teachers focus in on that. You know, they may incorporate on their tests and quizzes, one open response or one short answer. This would be a dedicated time in January that we would have a practice test for the sixth grade, really just to simulate that MCAS where you have to write your rough draft, edit, well, you brainstorm, and then you write your rough draft, edit, and then write your final copy.
Right.
All in sort of that same day, and it's just to get them in the habit and to practice.
Okay, great. Mrs. Cal?
And that's not going to be timed, right? They have...
No, it would be the same as MCAS, which is untimed. Yep, they have the same opportunity that they would on the actual day.
Yep, that's right. You just talked a minute ago about the TV, the...
The morning announcements.
Are we still using that? I haven't heard anything about it in a long time.
We have used it all year, up until the past two weeks. We have a little bit of technical difficulty, and we have a piece of the equipment out for repair, and it's going to be coming back.
But do we only use them for morning announcements, or are they used by classroom teachers beyond that during the day?
The TVs or the TV studio?
The TV studio, the TVs.
I would say that the TV studio is pretty much used for morning announcements. On occasion, we use it for a special event. The geography bee that we've had in the past, an announcement about a special contest or, the example being, several years ago, we traveled to the White House, and six students were able to get a personalized tour by one of our friends in Washington, and we sort of televised that live on the TV studio so that students knew we were picking fairly and that it was an exciting thing for students to receive. But on a daily basis, we don't use it but for morning announcements as to communicate.
I wonder if there's some way at some point to, like, coordinate with WCTV and find a way to use it, because it seems to me we spent a lot of money bringing that TV studio there, and I really would like to see it used more than just the morning announcements. And I know that's not you, per se, it's just how it is, but I wish we could, that, to me, would be one goal to look into, using that TV. And that's another thing, I wondered if when we first thought about it, we didn't have an idea for how to use it, and that explains to why you need to have your planning. Planning comes before, you had a quote on something, Mrs. Benton, when you sent out your notebooks, but, or, somebody did. I'm getting confused at where I find all these things, but the planning begets the plan, and that, you know, if we put things in just to put them in, because that's the latest thing that people are doing, are we getting our value for our dollar? And I don't think we are in certain areas. And my other thing was, do we have, I think, when Mr. Tracy was talking earlier too, we were talking that we do some cross, when you were talking about the schedule, then it occurred to me, how are teachers who are working at the high school working at the middle school as well? How is that working with two completely different schedules?
First two periods at one place, last two periods at the other.
First, okay.
It depends on the department, you know, but we work around the schedules. We communicate over the summer or in May and June to make sure that they fall correctly and that teachers who share time, for example, art over to the west or band and strings up to the high school or foreign language, that they have enough travel time...
Right.
...to get to and from, and that, you know, that they have their lunch in all of those planning periods, et cetera.
Oh, good, okay.
So it's tricky. Many districts do it.
Yeah, excellent, all right. And, oh, and I just wanted to say, I don't know if it's the same thing on your level, because I really haven't seen the test, but I know that on the 10th grade test, people think that it's English, and when they say English, it's not English. The actual test, the paragraphs are science paragraphs or socialized paragraphs, for the most part. There might be one poem that they work on or one thing from literature, but they also include paragraphs...
Nonfiction passages, absolutely.
Yes, exactly. And so to me, that's another area where I'm glad to see that you're working on that for the English, that you need to, the writing across the curriculum is fantastic, because it's not just the English teacher or the English class. And so I, when you're talking about taking time away, I think that we have to make sure that we don't take time away from social studies and science. I think you need the four of them together, so I just wanted to mention that. And this is, you've got so much here. It's very good. I think I had one, oh, I just had one other thing, and I just don't know if you know it or someone else might know it. Utilize tools such as AssistMents and Ten Marks. I don't know what AssistMents are or Ten Marks.
Those are programs that are easy for students to perform an assessment, whether it's a pre-assessment or a post-assessment, and the teacher is able to get the data back through the computer and be able to track students and monitor students' progress, whether it's in math or English. It's specifically focused on math right now with the AssistMents, but it has potential to grow. And Ten Marks was the program, similar without the progress monitoring, that we used to sort of engage the students last year in the middle school math challenge, which is our after-school sort of MCAS preparation, and the kids were not necessarily doing paper and pencil or up at the whiteboard, but they were on the computer, which we know they enjoy, and they were able to show the teachers what they know on answering five questions in a row or 10 questions in a row on decimals, on fractions. And we found it to be very engaging for the students, and they were more apt to want to stay after school and do their math that way and learn their math that way.
And we're providing you with that software through our budget?
AssistMents is free. It's a free tool based out of WPI, and it now has the backing of Bill and Melinda Gates.
Oh, nice.
So it's free, and we happened to use the free AssistMents tool. Many of these programs have multi-levels, so you would have the free basic model, and then you would have kind of like the forward tours, and then like the escalate.
Well done. Yes, Mrs. Benton?
Can I ask you, now, it's the teacher... Can all, put the curriculum, the math curriculum into that program, right?
Into the AssistMents?
Yes.
Yes.
And she can gauge to the student's abilities?
Skill level, sure, yep. And there's a whole, in AssistMents, there's a whole bank of questions from math and science already built into the tool.
Familiar with a very similar program?
Mm-hmm.
It's a different name?
Yeah, yeah.
Yeah, but I, and I think it's fabulous, actually.
It's almost ready-made for the teachers. Once they buy into it and they figure out what's possible, they jump right onto it.
But students with like language-based learning disabilities or delays in that area, you know, they can show what they know and they can show their skills without having to be tripped up over their deficits. It really is a good counter to find out how students are learning and what they're learning, yeah.
Yep.
Thank you so much for your time.
Thank you for your questions.
Thank you.
Nothing left.
Thank you.
Thank you for having us.
If I could, I'd like to start off by thanking members of our school advisory councils. It's Mr. Ferrio, Principal of the North, myself, Dennis Shaw, Principal of the West, Sally Lojek, teacher at the North, Lisa Ward and Kim Febo are our parent members, Ron Drury, Kelly Cushing, and Phyllis Green are teachers also on the committee. And for our goals, and I apologize because you'll hear some similar things, because we're all working on the same things, obviously. The first goal is related to English Language Arts. Our first goal is related to English Language Arts. Read it to you. Goal of 75 is determined by our progress and performance index. This is part of the new language that we're all learning about what AYP is not and what progress monitoring is. And I guess the simplest way to explain is the 75 relates back to that gap having goals that we're trying to accomplish by 2017. If we can maintain like a score of 75 as we go forward, we'll keep making the gains necessary in that gap having as we go forward. And it's a measurable goal that we can, we get data on that so we can measure that as we go forward in English Language Arts. In some of the ways that we're going about that, actually, two of the most important things we've been able to do with the data this year is identify high-risk students with much more specific information about their performance. And with that, we can then assess those students with the Founters and Penel Benchmarking System. So we're actually leveling the at-risk students in the building so we can teach them directly at their reading level. And that's happening multiple times over the course of the year for the at-risk students. And the other exciting piece this year is we had teachers participate in a workshop over the summer, which was a multi-community effort to create new writing rubrics that can be used for all the themes of writing across the curriculum, across the grade levels. It might seem like a no-brainer, but it's the first time we'll have this, a real tool in our hands that we can use to create internal exemplars of what good writing is, and we can, we can share that with the different themes of writing as we go forward in our reading program and be able to use that as we, you know, monitor the students' progress. I also, I just want to just toss out that a lot of this data exploration we've been able to do this year is really under the guidance of Jen Judkins, who are data specialists, who I think you've all met in a prior meeting. She's done a fabulous job with the principals, with the data teams, in really helping us to dig deeply into all this information that we now have at our fingertips. There's loads and loads of information out there for us, and she's really helping us to learn how to answer questions using the data that we have, you know, and find the information that's important. You know, a couple of the other things regarding English Language Arts that we're continuing to do that we've done before, you've heard them before, is we have the reading club for the higher-level reading students. We'll have our MCAS support programs before school at the West and after-school at the North, because times are different. Those are all kind of cranking up now. You know, we're starting those programs earlier as we get more concrete data on our hands, you know, going forward. And that's, in a nutshell, the English Language Arts. I know you have this in front of you, so you can read the specific goals there.
And our math objective is actually the same as our ELA objective, is that 75 figure being the gap having goal that we're trying to attain in math, in ELA. Our data team has been working quite a bit on looking at the recent MCAS data, trying to determine very specific areas of strength and weakness, and trying to put that data to work in the classroom. We actually just met yesterday, spending quite a bit of time trying to figure out what data is going to be most useful to put into the hands of teachers to get the greatest impact. I'm a little impatient myself. I want to move to fixing the problem, so I've had to slow myself down to make sure the data is driving, driving what we do. And one of the things, as Shaw mentioned, is the before and after-school programs. Math really works well for this, using the data, because you can really identify very specific areas of math where students are challenged, and we can, we can use programs like Study Island to really gear to specific, those specific weaknesses. So we could have 20 students in a lab, all working on Study Island and all focusing on their specific needs. So no two child, two children, no two children in the lab will be working on the same thing. It's all focused on their needs. So that's exciting. We continue to do the Math Olympiad program, which is something a couple of our teachers got involved with a couple of years ago, as a real challenge program for our more advanced kids, which is some group that often gets overlooked. We want to, we've got quite a number of actually of our fourth graders that came over this year that were in the advanced category, and we are committed to keeping them there and maybe moving some of those high proficient kids up there too, so we can attain those extra credit points that come along with getting children into the advanced category. We continue with the Math Word of the Week program. We continue to work with the math vertical team. Lisa Toledo's done a great job with sort of working with that committee, getting our math curriculum aligned with the Common Core. So we're excited about that work that's going on. We implemented the Saxon Math Program this year, which was something that Terry Buscemi introduced to us last year, and it's been implemented in our self-contained classrooms, substantially separate classrooms, so to really address the specific needs of that particular group. And lastly, over the summer, our fifth grade special ed staff, with our classroom teachers that provide inclusive services, attended a workshop together looking at the instruction of fractions particularly. And they're now implementing the recommendations from that workshop, working together as a team. And they're also being tracked throughout the year, looking specifically at the progress that those students in those inclusive classrooms are making in the area of fractions. We're excited about that. And our final goal is a social goal. Mr. Shaw and I feel very strongly that it's something that we want to maintain at the intermediate level, having a goal for maintaining a positive social climate in our school. And some of the ways that we're looking at that, continue with our second step anti-bullying program. It's been very successful for us, and I think it's, we really can see the impact that program has. I hear the children using the language and the staff. And the B word has taken on a whole other meaning at our level. It's not something that anybody wants to be labeled as. It's actually become very powerful. The word itself is a deterrent at this point, which is kind of neat. We continue with our peer leadership programs. We call them different things at the school, but they're essentially student council programs. We call it the North Stars Program of the North, and Mr. Shaw calls it the Student Council, but it's essentially the same thing. We've sort of, at our, I think you do it at fourth and fifth, but we do it at just fifth, where students are elected by their classmates as peer leaders. And we use them in a lot of different ways. They organize assemblies for us. There are students that meet with me periodically, looking at school-wide issues, giving them a voice in school-wide issues. I've turned to them and said, you know, "How do I stop running in the halls?" And it's fascinating to listen to 10, 11-year-olds tell you how to stop running in the halls, things you've never thought of. So we use them that way. And we also get, have, they spearhead a lot of community service activities. We recently also participated in that food drive. We raised over 1,300 food items in four days. It was amazing. So we do different things throughout the year. We'll continue to do that. These students also create a video yearbook. We got involved with the Video Club last year. We started the Video Club, working with WCTV. Unfortunately, the youth outreach person has left, and we're still waiting for them to hire a new person so we can get that going again. But we use our students to actually do, to document through video what's gone on in their fifth grade year so that they can put together this presentation at the end of the year, which the kids found really exciting last year. We've implemented a Student of the Month program this year where we're recognizing students for high academic work as well as character. Our teachers nominate students each month, and we select a fourth grader, a fifth grader. And we also have our specialist nominate a student too, so we, so that they're not left out as well. So some of those students who excel in those areas get recognized as well. And that's, that's been exciting. We continue with our anti-bullying activities. We have enrichment programs brought in by our PAC. We work with the SAD program at the high school, who comes in and works with our students, providing role models for our younger students and doing anti-bullying skits and programs for them, so that continues. We continue with our Principal's Wall of Fame, which is just another way of recognizing quality student academic work. Each month, we put up student work and we recognize them. We usually take a picture, we put it on our website, and they get all excited about that. And lastly, and it didn't show up in the plan, but I wanted to mention it, is that we're participating in national student election, which is going to take place on October 30th, where all of our students will actually get to vote for president. So we're kind of excited about that, and our teachers are gearing up for that now, teaching them a little bit about, about politics and their, you know, their civic responsibilities and whatnot.
It's a great web-based program that we get, we get curriculum that we can actually use in the classrooms, like, you know, with the MIMOs and display boards and things like that. What's nice about this particular one that we use is the kids all get a sticker, this is I voted, so they get a sticker right off the bat. And it gives you like live feeds of how the states are voting, like, you know, whether they're red or blue and stuff like that. And these are things that'll happen over the course of the week. The voting actually opens, I think, today. It's open until the 30th. We did it, we did it four years ago. It was a lot of fun, you know? I just want to add one thing, this is came because you had mentioned about the WCTV, because one thing, what they've reached out for this year is recognizing that Brandon is not there anymore this year to help us out, but they've given a feature camera to use, so we still have kids that are taking the videos, and they've offered, like, you know, their services to help us with the editing and stuff like that. We can just get down there and drop all the film off, and they'll put it together into a package that, you know, we can show on our TVs in the buildings, we can, like, you know, use for our video clubs and things like that. So I would just want to give them credit for kind of picking up the slack without the program actually being there this year, you know, until they replace that person, so.
Thank you, that's great.
But that's, that's the plan.
Well, thank you. Do we have any questions or comments?
And the B word is bullying, just to be sure.
Yes.
Sorry, I thought that was clear.
Mrs. Carroll? On the institute dedicated time block for ELA, it says at least 60 minutes of uninterrupted time. How much time do we have now? Do you know what that is?
Just about have the 60.
Oh, okay.
So it's to me, keep it, I'd love to get 90. It's going to take some, some creative scheduling over the course of this year with, with the people I share specialists with, and that's one of the goals that we have, that we want to maintain the 60 that we have right now.
Okay, you're gonna, okay, so we are having 60?
Yes, it's, yes.
So we're gonna try to maintain that?
It's a lock, yeah, yeah.
Okay.
It's a lock, thank you.
Two questions and a comment. My first question is, when the students vote for president, do they have to show their school ID?
No, that's a good idea, though.
Okay, there we go. And my, my second question is, well, my comment would be on a letter, you know, hand again. You know, I think that, Mr. Shaw, you have to step up and you have to come up with a more creative name for your student council.
Than student council?
Okay, right. You know, because the North Stars, and then you just have student councils. You know, but seriously, though, you know, I have faith in, you know, I have faith in your leadership, and I have faith in your teachers, and I have faith in your plans, but my question just is, you know, why sometimes do we not reach our goals? Like, I know last year was a bit of a, of a mix, you know, mixed results, and so I was just, you know, and I could have asked this earlier under the other agenda item, but I'll just ask it here. So, you know, why, why did we only reach some of our goals last year?
It's a great question. What we've seen over the past few years, and what we've seen raises even more questions. We've seen, you know, students in the third grade scoring here, dip in the fourth grade, pick up the slack and make up for it in the fifth grade. We're trying to understand what this, what this little dip is, and it's, it's been consistent. So, so one of the questions that Mr. Ferrio and I started talking about, because, is because of its consistency and its regularity and the fact that it's impacting both of us, it has us looking at curriculum more specifically now, because we're saying, okay, maybe it's not the kids, it must be something in what we do. So, so we've, again, like, you know, taken advantage of some of the more specific data that we have now, starting some of the programs that have shown some success earlier in the year, we're hoping that this will have an impact, you know? The Saxon Math Program that Mr. Ferrio mentioned, you know, specific to the language-based classrooms right now, also has some possible implications, like, you know, into students in IEPs, like, you know, for additional math help also. There's some new tools that we have in place right now that we're hoping will kind of break that pattern that we're in right now. It doesn't answer your question fully, but that's something we've been looking at.
The other piece, dare I say, but it's true. I have a theory that the fact that they are in new schools, think about students who have, are in a school for five years, all the teachers know these kids, whether they have them or not, is not the transition to a, physical transition to a different place. There is a difference in the, sort of the expectations at the primary schools than there are at the intermediate schools. And I think that we have to spend time, the first few months, adjusting to a new school. And I really believe that that has something to do with it, because he's absolutely right. It's the fourth grade students that we see the dip in every year. And it is the same curriculum. We're using the same skill, teaching strategies, and I think it has something to do with that. But I'm continuing to test it out, so I'll let you know.
Thank you, Mrs. Benton, because I want to be sure that the message comes across that this is in no way an implication of like, of the fourth grade teachers, you know what I mean? Because they are teaching and teaching and teaching and teaching, you know what I mean? So there's, and that's why we're struggling to figure out exactly what it is, you know, because again, it's happening to both of us, you know?
But that's why I think, that's why I think it lends itself to think that it's a transition piece. If you're getting, seeing it consistently, you know what I mean? And if it's consistently in both your schools, then that's even more of a, I think, telling piece.
It's a red flag for sure. We have to just look at it and see.
Right, right. It's just, it's just finding how that, how you can build up that transition to be a little bit more smoother and they can start to engage in the, in their classes a little more quickly than, you know, that's the truth.
Can I, can I let Mr. Muller speak before he set his hand up and went away?
I just want to make a quick comment. Just the, the activities that promote positive growth, I'm very impressed by them. And specifically the fact that bullying has become a bad word in such a short time. I think that's really impressive. And the other thing too, to Robert's question, I hope you're not alluding to voter suppression at this early state in voting for these kids, so asking about IDs, but it's very impressive, so.
We'll let you know the results. By the way, the kids can also vote at the library. The Friends of the Library are sponsoring a penny poll, and I'm not sure if we're teaching students the right thing, because they can vote, they can vote more than once. So, but, but all the money raised goes to the library, so it's for a good cause, and there's a life-size cardboard cutout here, gentlemen.
Can I just say one more thing about just looking at sort of the makeup of the system and scores? We have a program going on this year at the Ruben Street where one of the teachers has moved up with his students from second grade to third grade, so he's had the students for two years. My guess is you're going to see higher scores in that classroom, because as he said, on the first day of school this year, it was not the first day, but the 183rd day with the students, and he could jump right into knowing where each of the students was. And so we'll see what happens. But I think there's different models we should be looking at, because it might be interesting, you know where I'm going with this, might be interesting to see a third grade teacher move to fourth grade with the class and see, because that's how we could tell.
Absolutely.
So, anyway.
Can I also ask you to, when you're looking at the data, are you looking at this year's fourth grade, what were the third graders last year, or are you looking at last year's fourth grade, who are now the fifth grade this year? Do you know what I'm saying?
I do. We do both.
Okay.
We do both, because, you know, watching the kids who move shows us what we taught this past year and how those kids responded to it. But we also look at the data of the kids who are now in front of us, to see what we need to adjust right up, right from the get-go. What is the data telling us about the kids that are now sitting here that we can make fast changes on and address quickly, while we work behind the scenes at adjusting what might be like larger trends that we see. We call it the autopsy, because the kids are already gone, but that's, you know, how do we use that data to measure them?
It's the fifth grade class, is the class that you have the two years of data on, so you can start to see the growth. Because it's the growth piece that we really need to be focused on, which is individualized students.
Yeah.
And my other comment was, it's interesting that on your report, which kind of goes with how I'm feeling about technology, you don't have technology specific to your growth or what you're learning. So I'm thinking, are you happy with the technology we've given you to this point, and you're integrating it, and it's just another tool, and there it goes?
That's a tough question. We've made a lot of progress.
I'm just wondering, because you're the only group that did not, did not use that in here, so does that mean you're, you're happy with how, what you're getting, and you're able to get what you want, and, or?
Yeah, I don't, I don't see it, I don't see it as, as a goal to see how much we can get. We've made a lot of progress.
Absolutely.
I mean, every teacher has a computer, every, every teacher has a mounted projector in their classroom. You know, are we pursuing more MIMOs? Yep, probably. But to me, to me, they're tools at this point, you know, it's not, I don't necessarily see it as something that would fit into a school improvement plan. It's, they're tools to support what we're talking about here, supporting math, or supporting ELA, or even supporting the social goals.
But just a reminder, the budget this year, the elementary schools all got all the stuff since the middle school has the least amount now. But they've all, they, they have plenty of equipment now that we did not see across the system a couple of years ago.
Right.
And it was thanks to both their packs and the budget. It's not just the school, but their packs have done it too.
But it appears that they're being, they're being used, it's being integrated.
I, I think it's a good point. It, it is, you know? But I think it's happening everywhere, even, you know, even whether we're asking for it or not. It's, again, it's, it's, I think having it doesn't make us better. It's, it's using it, you know what I mean? So that's, that's the thing. So in people, it, it's exemplified by the Wilmington University courses and who's teaching those courses. All of our teachers are teaching the courses. All of our teachers are taking the courses and they come back excited and they're sharing something else new with their colleagues at a meeting, you know what I mean? So.
Right. I'm not meaning to cast aspersions on any other schools. I'm just, I found it interesting that you just hadn't mentioned it, the others had.
We still ask, Martha. We just, Paul knows.
Hey, anything else? You all set? Thank you very much.
Thank you.
We didn't get the offer of anything we need.
Not even say I say everyone. I didn't want to say it eight times.
A third question, actually.
Okay, next group.
Thank you.
I just want to acknowledge that we have both assistant principals, Lisa King and Jason Fedett with us as well this evening. We thank them.
Oh, they're gonna have an active role, too. They're not just sitting there. So we'll get that all set.
Would you like them to come up?
Not yet. We've got it all planned out. You know, we're very creative with the Shawshina Ruben Street School. So, good evening and thank you for allowing us to come here to present our school improvement plan. We'd like to start off first by recognizing the hard work and, and the efforts of our school advisory council. I'd like to begin with introducing our parent representatives, Mrs. Rochelle Toth, Mrs. Rhonda Rubin, Mrs. Tricia Brisboise, and Mrs. Rena Collin. Our teacher representatives, Mrs. Joanne Miles, Mrs. Diane Flaherty, Mrs. Roxanne Rainey, and our community representative, Mr. James Manuel. Of course, missing from the list here is also Mr. Jason Fedett.
Over at the Ruben Street, we had parents, Mrs. Dana Burnham, Mrs. Rosalina Piatza, and Mrs. Julie Santini. Teachers, we had Mrs. Cheryl Netner and Miss Sandra Arciera.
What we're gonna ask you this evening is that we kind of go a little bit out of order. We are going to present to you first goals one and then three because we have our two gurus here with MTSS, Mr. Fedett and Mrs. King, and they'll come up and present goal two. So Mr. Straznik and I will go through one and three, answer any questions you have, and then have our assistant principals come up here, if that's okay. Thank you. Our first goal, as you've heard this evening, a lot of the times the buzzword is Common Core. And we want to have aligned both our Puthlin and our Math Trailblazers curriculum maps with the state Common Core standards. Basically, we, in doing this work, and we want to recognize Mr. LaPointe, the elementary literacy coordinator, and now with the work of Mrs. Terry Bishemi, but being carried on by Mrs. Lisa Marie Ippolito. They, Mr. LaPointe is heading the ELA vertical team and Mrs. Ippolito, the math vertical team. And it is a wonderful way to get this work done because you have teacher representatives across town at each grade level doing this work and then bringing that information back to their colleagues. So some of this work, particularly in math, has begun. We were taking a look at the curriculum maps and seeing what standards we are already being addressed in those programs and then seeing what standards may not be being addressed. So their work is in discovering that, is then finding the supplementary lessons, websites, activities that we can provide to the teachers in preparation for MCAS because basically these standards are now going to be tested on the MCAS. So this work is, while we want to have it accomplished by this year, it's going to be ongoing and ongoing sharing, too. So as we're discovering information, we're going to be providing that information for teachers so they have that supplementary lesson or materials. I know those standards that we need to work on in addition to what's already being addressed by the Math Trailblazers program and the Hope Niflin Reading Program. We also want to, and looking at is making sure are there certain skills or standards within the current programs that no longer need to be addressed so that we're not just adding on more, but we're taking away and then just supplementing of what we need to do. So again, our work is, is going to be working closely with them, supporting them and assisting them throughout the year in getting this information discovered and shared and addressed as we learn, as we learn, as we are aligning the curriculum.
And looking at goal three, again, one of the things that we wanted to address this coming year were, you know, the, the science standards, making sure that, you know, as a start in both Shawshia and Ruben Street Schools that, you know, the science instruction was consistent, that teachers were teaching the same thing, using similar materials, building upon what the vertical team did as far as, you know, talking about what grade levels are we doing, what science units. So we have that, so we're looking at that. We do have new science standards coming out next year, so we're aware of that and, and don't want to, you know, jump into anything full steam just yet. So we're looking at maybe piloting a few programs this year to see, you know, what we like, what are the components of those programs. Because again, we want to be consistent, especially now where in, in fifth grade, you know, science was always tested, but now it's part of the accountability numbers. So it's not just a score that's reported, it's reported and it actually counts. So we want to make sure that the students we're sending from, you know, the primary elementaries going on to intermediate are well-prepared and the, and the fourth and fifth grade teachers aren't scrambling to make sure that everything the kids need to have been taught is taught. You know, we, we sent out a survey recently, the principals, assistant principals, Paul Monaco, the STEM coordinator, we got together and, and sent out a survey to teachers just to see, you know, what's going on, what's happening. Where could you use more help, you know, whether it's professional development, whether it's resources, looking at grade levels and, and how often in teaching science. Is it, you know, 30 minutes for a class or is it 60 minutes for a class? Is it, are you teaching it once a week, three times a week? So, you know, we, we just got the information back from the teachers. We had a very, very positive number of teachers that, that participated, which was great. So now we're gonna sit down, look at those and really come up with a plan for, for what we're gonna do next. And so that's kind of what we're doing right now and, and we'll be working on that this year.
And one of the pieces, we're very interested in looking at science programs because a lot of the times as we're analyzing data from MCAS, is noticing that in many of the years that the children seem to be following is in nonfiction reading. And we're looking to make sure that some of these programs have that opportunity to have a nonfiction, that children have exposure to that. And this is why it's just so important to have that reading across the curriculum and, and particularly in those years like social studies and science. So that is one of the components that is going to be something that we're gonna keep an eye out for as we're looking at them.
Do we have any questions? I just have one question. Your, the first goal here on the Ames Web, could you just explain that, what it is? Ames Web, administer benchmark for all students using Ames Web?
Is that goal one or is that goal two?
Oh, that's what we're going back to.
And that's what, yes, our experts are gonna be addressing it, so. It's all right. Not that we don't know, but we really.
We skipped around.
And you know what? Actually, I should be ashamed of myself because I do know what it is because I saw the presentation. It's excellent. Thank you. Okay, thank you. Any other?
All right. So we're gonna bring up Mr. Fedett and Mrs. King for goal number two.
Oh, we absolutely did yoga. I didn't do it as well as the others, but we all tried.
We will be very brief. I know it's one of my strengths, is brevity. So we, I promise. The, the really kind of basis, this has been an ongoing rollout of a multi-tiered system of supports, formerly known as RTI, if people have heard that before, respawns intervention. It's now become both federally really kind of gaining, except it says MTSS, multi-tiered, but also Massachusetts Tiered System of Supports statewide. So over the, the past two years, we've been implementing and rolling out this program, first grade and the second grade. And this year will be the first year that we'll have a school-wide, one through three students that are going to be assessed and monitored using the Ames Web system. And what that is, and Mrs. King, you know, you could probably come up here and tell after listening the other night. What that is, is an online web-based system that allows you, we, we're using it for the purposes of ELA, but it does have a math and actually behavior component. But what it does is allow you to benchmark, monitor students and assess them and then track their performance. And what was great about this system is it gives you all the graphs, information, slice and dice information, and whatever you'd like. So if anybody wants to go, you can, there's actually a little demo video at www.amisweb, A-M-I-S-web.com. So it could give you more of a detailed look at that. And so now that we have grade three using this system, what we want to do is really create school-wide system and a school-wide structure that's gonna support a multi-tiered system for our students, one to three. And Mrs. King's gonna speak a little bit more specifically about the objectives.
So that brings us to some of our objectives. So we want to continue to do benchmark testing three times a year and utilizing the Ames Web, again, grades one through three and to determine target scores for our students. We're also going to use Ames Web and all the data to monitor student progress by class, by grade level. We can look at the data as a district and in different areas. And then our other specific objective is to provide interventions for students who are falling below or well below the target area using these, this data and, and then to monitor their effectiveness. So when students are falling below a certain target score, providing interventions for that student and then monitoring their progress. So some of the activities include, you know, training for the staff, initial training for our third grade teachers who are just starting this out, administering the benchmark testings, of course, and providing interventions and extension activities to match to individual students and groups using the local data, analyzing the data, working on scheduling to sort of help with those intervention times and increasing our reading blocks. That's really important. And also then to do a sort of a needs assessment survey and find out, you know, where are we at as a district, what do teachers need. And it's a big, it's a big task and there's a lot to it, but we've been working on it for a few years, so.
And I just want to acknowledge the work that these two assistant principals have done over the past three.
Gurus, experts, and go, go on.
They are. We can send them on the road. We're offering them to the state to just do a presentation, seriously, because I think they've done a phenomenal job and you will see the results in your students' work. And parents now have extra information that they can receive on their children. And we have a better test, litmus test of where students are, what they know and are able to do and what we need to do to make them progress. So I wanted to just acknowledge the work. Thank you.
Thank you. Do we have any questions? Must have been good. We all understood it. Thank you very much.
We're back.
Good to see you again.
So we'd like to begin by thanking the members of our, our school advisory council, our parent members from the Beltwell, Mrs. Jessica Bourgeois, Mrs. Jennifer Bryson, Mr. Kevin Tibbetts, and our parent volunteers from the Wildwood, Mr. Jonathan Heos, Mrs. Katie Ong, Mrs. Katie Rego, and our two teacher representatives, Mrs. Abby Kambrus and Mrs. Emily Viera. And thanks to our gurus, hopefully, our first goal will be pretty, pretty straightforward as at the early childhood level, we are looking to use data results to inform instruction through the implementation of reading assessment tools, both Ames Web and Fountas and Pennell. The kindergarten grade level, we were a year behind with Ames Web. We had currently been using Dibbles last year as our benchmark assessment tool. And we have since switched over to Ames Web in order to support what's going on at the elementary levels and also to kind of streamline the, the data. We also found that the graphs that were available through Ames Web were a lot more user-friendly for, for teachers and for our eventual implementation of data, data teams. So we made the switch. And then we are also implementing Fountas and Pennell reading leveling assessment at the early childhood level this year as well coming on the tails of the elementary levels last year. We began with some training for staff on both Ames Web and Fountas and Pennell, thanks to our literacy coordinator, Mr. Jerry LaPointe. He's been extremely supportive to both Mrs. Mahan and myself, as well as all the classroom teachers in learning how to utilize the Fountas and Pennell assessment. And then we will be taking the data that's from Ames Web and Fountas and Pennell throughout the year and utilizing it to inform the instructions going on at the kindergarten level as well as to be beginning the implementation of interventions for students who may be struggling with early literacy skills, as well as to start enriching students who may be, may exhibit a strength in that particular area. And then our ultimate goal at the end of the year is, of course, to share those results with the receiving grade one teachers so that they have some really good information to utilize as the students are coming into their first grade classrooms.
Our second goal is to implement an, the new three-term kindergarten report card, which we had discussed earlier. So our first objective to, was to present it to the school committee, so we can cross that off our list. Check. The next would be that the report card is then adopted by both early childhood centers for use this school year. And as we had said earlier, we will be creating a schedule for distribution of the report card, which will align with the primary schools and the other intermediate schools. They'll go home three times a year as opposed to just twice. And as Mr. Hayes had asked a question about how are we gonna reach out to parents, we will be hosting a parent evening to get to know the new report card and again, how to get the most out of your parent-teacher Our third goal is actually one that is a continuation from last year, and it is to receive accreditation from the National Association of Education for Young Children. We finally call it NIAC, and it's to accredit our kindergarten programs. It's a goal that we've been working on for some time. And honestly, we stumbled upon a couple of roadblocks, but we've come to a point where we've, we think we're able to work through them. So there's some things that are still ongoing. The teachers are constantly updating their classroom portfolios. Mrs. Burke and I are constantly updating our program portfolios. We will be gathering some information and surveying the families, transferring that into spreadsheets for the NIAC folks when they come to visit. We will be submitting our candidacy materials. We do need to work with, within our district to train all staff in CPR and pediatric first aid. So that was our, that was our roadblock. But we're, we're going to get over it. And then, again, the final hurdle is that visit by NIAC, which will hopefully occur at the very end of the school year, the beginning of next school year. And they give us a window of some time once we submit our materials. And then that would be, the final step would be receive accreditation and we're all set. Any questions?
Do we have any questions? Could I ask, I know that on the accreditation for the high school, we had to set aside $15,000 in our budget. Had we set aside, I don't remember us doing that for the.
No, it's, it's, it's minor compared to.
Oh, good. Okay. Okay, that sounds good. Does anyone have any more questions? I would just like to say on behalf of the school committee, I think they'd allow me to say this for you. We hope that you go back tomorrow to your staffs and tell them thank you because this is so impressive, the work that you do. This is an interesting evening for us to see what's really going on in, in the schools. And we really appreciate your work and the hard work of the teachers and everything that you do for our children. So we'd like to say thank you for that. Thank you to you and to your staff. And as a result, we will let you go home now.
Well, you could stay and support, support the nurses.
All right. Our, our next item of business is to vote to ratify the nurses' contract.
So I'm pleased to announce that the nurses and the school committee came to agreement on a, actually a four-year contract because last year, the, the contract ran out a year ago. And instead of going through a fact-finding process, we actually worked that day to come to an agreement. So I want to acknowledge the work of Maureen. Travis was the lead person on the nurses' side and actually took a personal day to work with us and the team on, to get this settled and to thank the nurses for their ability to compromise, as did we. And I think we've come up with a, a, a good contract. So officially, the school committee will now vote to ratify the contract in public. We've already done it.
So I would entertain a motion to approve the memorandum of agreement for the nurses for the 2011, 2012 school year. Yeah, Mrs. Bonner?
I'm making motion to vote to.
I'm making a motion to vote to approve the memorandum of agreement for the nurses for the 2011-2012 school year.
And second, Mrs. Burns? All right. Everyone in favor? Unanimous, Linda? Thank you. And the second vote is to approve the memorandum of agreement for the nurses for the 2012 to 2015 school years. Yeah, Mr. Hayes?
I'll make the motion, we vote to approve the memorandum of agreement for the nurses for the 2012-2015 school years.
And second, Mr. Mullis? Everybody in favor? Unanimous, Linda? Thank you. Thank you, we're glad, thank you, we're glad that's worked out for all of us. Appreciate it. All right, public comments.
No, we just want to say thank you very much.
Thank you. All right. And other reports, subcommittee reports, Mr. Hayes has one for us.
Mrs. Burns touched on it at the last meeting, but just, just so folks know, the CPAC is having a Basic Rights and Special Education Workshop for Parents and Professionals. It is tomorrow night, so those on tape delay. So it's Thursday, October 25th, 2012, 6:30 to 8:30 in the Wilmington High School library. And folks are, it's suggested that they contact Martha O'Brien, and it is okay to give out her phone number. And basically, the Basic Rights Workshop provides families with an introduction to their rights and responsibilities under Individuals with Disabilities Education Act, Massachusetts Special Education Law, and No Child Left Behind. This workshop is designed to help parents learn to be effective partners with their child's school, to decide their child's eligibility for special education, and to plan, make decisions, and monitor their child's progress in school. So again, that's tomorrow night, Thursday, October 25th at 6:30.
Great. Thank you, Mr. Hayes. Okay. We're just going to make a couple of just changes under the subcommittees and we're going to have legislative representative, Mrs. Burns has agreed to participate in that. And Mr. Hayes, who was that, is now going to participate in, as the school committee representative to the CPAC. So we'll change, make those two changes and it'll be in your packet the next time you go in there. And as far as we know, all of these other subcommittees are presently working. Is that right? We don't know that they're not.
I was raising a question regarding the Anti-Bullying Committee. I'm not quite sure as to when and at what time of year that steps off, either whether it be for a review of the policy or any new situations that might meet concern.
Would that be, we could check with Mrs. McMiner.
McMiner, I think we'll do it, yeah, they do. Usually do it in the spring.
In the spring, okay, all right. So that'll be Mrs. Burns and Mrs. Carroll when that comes up. Great, thank you. And we'll be meeting tomorrow, Mr. Mullis and myself, with the superintendent about the Strategic Plan Advisory Committee, so that's going along. Let me see. Any correspondence?
No.
No, thank you.
Can I do a verbal one? Because Leslie's not here. I just want to remind everyone that on Wednesday, October 34th, is the Wilmington Educational Foundation Walk for Fitness, and it's the, one of the largest fundraisers that the foundation does for the schools. Each school participates, gets half of the funds to promote individual school grants and the other half goes to fulfill community grants, like what, this evening, the second goal for the Woburn Street and Shawshine, they actually got a grant to go to, to present a week-long workshop this summer to all the teachers through the Wilmington Educational Foundation. So we'd love for you to come out and support it.
Thank you. All right.
And you can dress up if you make a donation.
Now, before our next meeting, Mrs. Burns, Mr. Hayes and myself will have attended the conference, so we'll have some reports to make when we come back from that. And our next meeting will be November 14th and followed by November 28th. So I would entertain a motion to adjourn. Mr. Hayes?
I'll make a motion to adjourn.
And second, Mr. Mullis? All those in favor? Unanimous.
Thank you.
Thank you. Have a good night.